By a crash on the highway right next to the entrance to Landville, you sit there for weeks. Till you find it.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think that's, but this isn't gonna fix, they're not picking this stuff up anyway, even if it was the haul. You still have to call, and if you have a free haul, you still have to call.
Well, wouldn't there be some way for us to pick it up, charge them, or what, like they've got something sitting out there for months?
Give them a ticket, I guess.
Well, you sign them, or if we have to haul it off, you charge them on their water bill, and then they have to pay it. Is that not, it's gonna be problematic, because they're gonna say they didn't put that there, someone else did.
Exactly. Right. We can't charge them without their permission to charge.
You can ticket them though, right?
They can, code enforcement can ticket them, and we can go pick it up, and they can get the money through the court.
I feel like what we're doing right now is working.
Yeah, I mean, in certain areas it might, but in other areas, like...
Maybe that's where we target areas with extra roll-offs when we do it again.
Yeah, I mean... Well, when something sits there for weeks, I mean, they just stop and pick the thing up. Don't worry about who's gonna, if you're gonna pay somebody or something, or somebody's gonna pay to pick it up.
Well, that really doesn't matter. We're paying for it anyway if we keep doing it like this ordinance has.
I just don't know of other cities that do that, all over the city. So, there's probably a reason why other cities don't do that all over the city as well.
You can't sustain it.
Well, not without going up on the other utility costs in order to cover those expenses. We'll have to, right? So, someone's gonna pay for it.
Have we showed any documentation, like, what the cost was, what we were having to pay before, and now that we've stopped it? Has there been any documentation of, like, money saved?
I'm sure there was before we had a ransom attack. Because, I mean, all of our landfill weights and everything else like that, were gone. We're not putting as much through our transfer station when we're not doing that extra haul.
Okay. So, tonight, I'll make the motion that we approve repealing this ordinance on the extra haul.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second to repeal ordinance 2025-19 and Section 51-42 of the City Code. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
No.
Councilmember Shearer?
No.
Vice Mayor Simulaskew?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes. Next is item 4D, consideration and possible approval of a replat of property located at East Mulberry and Northeast Second Avenue, described as parts of Lot 5 and 6 and Block 69 of the City of Durant. Paul.
Good evening, everyone. This is just a replat over off of Mulberry. One large lot gonna be divided into two lots. They plan to put a duplex on each lot. Both lot sizes will be well over the required lot size for that zoning, and the frontage is all met, setbacks are all met. This is a pretty cookie cutter lot split on this one. So, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them now.
Questions on this replat request?
Planning and zoning's recommendation?
Four yeses, zero noes, and zero abstains.
Other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, I'll make a motion that we approve this replat for property at East Mulberry and Northeast Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for item 4D, which is a replat. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shearer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulaskew?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker? Mayor Tucker?
Yes. All right. Next is item 4E, which is consideration and approval of a final plat for property, property located near Lindenwood Drive, and I'm definitely not reading all of that legal description. So...
This one is another section of Lindenwood's. I do apologize for not being at the last P&amp;Z meeting. This one did get kinda confusing. After getting back and talking with everybody, the terminology is what got everybody kinda confused. When this originally got approved preliminary, they were using the terminology Lot 1 and 2, which is what got approved preliminary. When they came back, they were using the terms Phase 7 and Phase 8, which are still Lot 1 and 2. At the time, I think P&amp;Z thought Phase 8 was a different part than what was approved preliminary. After going back and pulling the preliminary files on this, what they're asking the final is exactly what they asked for, or got approved for preliminary. No changes other than what was asked by the council, where they moved one of the building lines to, to where it was supposed to be.
So, we don't have any planning and zoning members here, do we, tonight?
No, sir.
Okay.
But it, it did carry with, motion to...
Well, they wanted to change it to a preliminary plat, and that's why I was wanting to ask them what would be the purpose of making this preliminary, if this is the, the final part of it, and nothing's changed.
Like I said, I think it was just mainly confusion on the terminology that was being used. Because even I did, in my original staff report, was, oh, they're trying to include Phase 8 in this. And then after going back and pulling the original preliminary that we approved, it was already, it was just being used as Lot 1 and 2, so...
Okay. Comments or questions on, on this replat?
What was the recommendation on this one? I thought this one was denied.
Well, they voted to deny, but again, I think they were confused when they got their lots, one, Lot 7 and 8 confused with, uh...
Phases. They wanted to confuse with...
Phase 7 and 8. I mean, I think they got their terminology mixed up. So, that's why I was hoping one of them would be here that we could ask them. But based on what Paul is telling us, that this isn't in accordance with the original plat, no change, then I vote that we would approve it. Or that my motion is that we approve it, I should say. Without a second, we'll move on to the next item then. Hearing no second, we'll move on to item 4F, which is consideration and possible approval of a rezone to C3 General Commercial District for property located at 101 East Main Street in Durant. And there's another legal description there.
Yeah, this is currently zoned I-2. When the applicant approached us, it's a, it's an existing building that I think was, was done by those that came before me and turned out the zoning didn't...
Excuse me, one second. Sorry, I didn't realize you were, we're gonna move on so quickly. Could we just table that one until everything's resolved with planning and zoning, instead of just letting it die?
Same difference. But yes, we can. Same difference.
Well, because if you let it die, it doesn't, I don't think it comes back. If we table it, it comes back.
We put it back on.
Yeah, you can put it back on.
Because I read that, and I was just a little confused by it, and it just may be semantics. But I feel like I wanna hear somebody from planning and zoning.
Which Mason, did you have a chance to review those documents I sent you, sir, about Lindenwood?
Yes, can you hear me? Can you talk to this Mason?
Mason, your microphone's not working right.
Okay. All right, so you can hear me.
We can barely hear you, Mason.
I am, I'm not hearing you. Just the microphone, can you hear me now?
Okay, tabling it then?
Yes.
Okay. We'll consider 4E tabled at this point? All right, now we move on to 4F, which is 101 East Main Street.
Okay, yeah. So, he built this with the, I think originally with the intentions of having a restaurant or some commercial business over there. When he found out that he wasn't zoned for that at the time, and I was a code officer at the time, so I'm just trying to remember best I can, he decided to just use it as a community center. He recently approached us with what he needed to do to try to get it into a small restaurant. After a little bit of looking, I found out that the future land use over there is commercial, and I told him that that's what he would need in order to do this, so he was free to apply for a rezone. If you notice, it did, motion to approve was four to zero noes. But I did, my recommendation to the city council was motion to approve based on a variance granted by the BOA. The maps at the time showed a perfectly square property. When I went back and looked at another set of maps we had, it was more obtuse. So, his frontage was about 10 feet shy of having the required frontage for that zoning. So, the recommendation that was approved was approval based on the variance granted for BOA to not meet the required frontage.
Comments or questions on that property?
Do we have a map of this location?
In the packet was. I didn't bring the, I didn't bring the packet.
They should have been, yeah, they were packets sent and uploaded for the agenda.
Now, Paul, this is on the, on the north side of Main Street?
No, it's directly across the tracks to East Main, right there on the right side, if you're heading down East Main. Relatively new building, I think rock frontage with...
Okay. Here we go.
There you go.
Does this individual own the property for some time?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, the applicant is the owner of the property.
And how long has he owned the property?
I think he purchased it right around the time that he was building the community, or the, the original structure. They had torn down something and then started building this new structure that they've got there now.
Look about page 85. I don't know what page you're on there.
Now, the new structure you're talking about, is it where the old storage buildings were that burnt?
I think maybe so. Like, right as soon as you cross those tracks and go right at the end of that lumber company's storage, or fence there, is that newer-looking metal building, got the rock front and the metal roof, the metal roof there.
Okay.
But while they look for that, this is, this is what I meant by the F2 property. This is the frontage there at East Main, and there's Southeast First there. On one map, it showed this come all the way over and come down, so it looked like everything checked out.
Right.
After they applied, we realized that that, that some right way takes all this up, part of his land up, so it made it at a weird angle, and he was a little bit shy on that required frontage.
Is that why planning, zoning denied it?
No, they, they voted four to zero to approve it with the contingency of the BOA variance.
Okay, I almost understood you then.
I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, it's in the, that's how your packet too, there were four O for a yes vote.
So, it's on the, it's on the east side of the tracks, or is it on the...
Yeah, correct. I know where you're at.
Good.
Seems like the future land use is commercial, so it would fit minus the, like you said, the variance that they may need. Because I was, I was looking at that yesterday, because before, it looked like it was all supposed to be industrial previously, and then the future land use has that, so it would fit technically, I guess.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 4F, which is at 101 East Fur, East Main Street. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. As an emergency clause, I make a motion that we approve under ordinance 2025-15, Section 2, the emergency clause for this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 4F, number 2, which is the emergency clause. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shearer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simlesku?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes. Next is item 4G1, which is consideration and possible approval of a rezone to R3 General Residential District and replat for property near South Third Avenue. And then there's the legal description. So, go ahead, Paul.
This one is very similar to the Dorado property that we first talked about. He has, it's one large lot. He has a desire to build two single-family homes. If it stayed the zoning, it currently is, he, he wouldn't meet any of the frontage requirements to do that. It's a little wider for that. If we do the rezone to R3, it cuts that frontage and lot size down to where he could do two single-family homes. At first, I was a little hesitant about it, and then I looked at the existing lots around it, and cutting it down, it'll conform with every lot on that block, same size, same frontage. So, and it does directly abut in R3 zoning, so...
They were four...
Four yeses, zero noes.
Yeah, four to zero yes on this one. Questions or comments on this property, South Third Avenue?
I make the motion we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the rezone for property on South Third Avenue. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shearer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simlesku?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes. Next, I would make a motion that we consider approval of ordinance 2025-16, Section 2, for this, the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for item 4G, number 2, which is the emergency clause. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shearer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simlesku?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes. Next is item 4H. This is consideration and possible approval of a replat for property located near Washington Avenue and Fisherman's Lane. And I'll turn it over to Paul. There's a half of a page of a legal description here.
This is a very, this is kinda just cleanup. It was one large lot, several structures on there from years ago. They wanted to conform with the city ordinance. They come in, asked us how to do that. We got it all divided. At the time, one of the structures was not gonna have the required frontage to Fisherman's Lane.
Right.
They got warranty deed it over the required 70-foot to make, that's the highlighted part you see there. So, now it will go into 1, 2, 3, 4 lots there, with all meeting current city codes and zoning requirements. And it did carry with the vote of four yeses.
Questions or comments on this?
No. I'll make the motion we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 4H, which is at Washington Avenue and Fisherman's Lane. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shearer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simlesku?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes. Next is item 4I, consideration and approval of a rezone, replat request for property located near Country Club Road and Southeast Third Avenue, and then there's a very long legal description there as well. Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, the applicant, representative of the property owner, approached us wanting to rezone this into three lots and rezone it to R1. It's currently zoned A1 with the future land use of industrial, given the area. It would be three very large lots for R1. It's not read into the motion here, but planning commission did vote to deny this with one yes, or two yeses, one no, and one abstain. The motion carried to deny due to it not conforming with current or future land use.
Everybody know where this lot, where this property's located?
Yep.
It's right on the bypass, or right down next to the bypass. Comments or questions on this request?
Two yeses to deny.
Two of the planning and zoning voted to deny this most, this request.
So, one, two yes, one no, and one abstain?
Yes, sir. Two to deny, one to, to no, two to denial, and one was abstained.
And abstain carries the same weight as a no vote. Comments or questions?
I mean, this seems like spot zoning. I don't think it's a good idea.
And you said it does not match our future land use map?
Correct.
Is the current property owner wanting this done, or is this future property owners?
I'm not sure. I know the future property owner was wanting it to be R1, so I'm not sure if it was more of a push from the future or the current property owner. We had just been speaking with the representative of the property owner.
More comments or questions? Hearing none, I make a motion that we deny this request for a rezone and replat.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny the motion for a rezone and replat, which is item 4I. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shearer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simlesku?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes. That not passing negates the need for item 4I-2, so we'll skip on down now to item 4J, consideration and approval of a rezone and replat for property located near West Main Street and Gates Avenue. And this belongs to the Lock Company. Paul.
And this is quite a unique situation. I think it's a first for most people involved. Lock Supplies purchased a parcel of land out there, all zoned C3. There was one small parcel that was C2. We asked if they would rezone just to have that conform with the rest of it. They also wanted to replat from multiple lots to two lots. If you, keep going, Christopher, if you would. There is an existing city street that has bays, curb, and gutters already there known as Luann Drive that you see running through there. It does already...
Huh? Luann?
Luann. It does already have the, the base put down, the curb gutters put in, the cul-de-sac is poured. So, you'll have lots down here, Lock Supply will actually set down here to the property that abuts Main. That will be a vacant lot until they decide what they wanna do with it. And then down here, you've got a residential property that abuts what is known as Gates, but that's not what that map reads. Planning Commission's vote was to move this to a preliminary plat as opposed to a final, to make them widen that road out and make it base more for commercial. I would like to add that our street superintendent, along with Philip and myself and a few others, we don't feel comfortable saying, hey, this is our road. It's already platted commercial around, or it's already zoned commercial around it. The road's already ours. It's been ours for 20 years, but we want you to go in and... it's been ours for 20 years, but we want you to go in and spend your money to make it bigger for us. So, I'd, I would like to add that streets department is okay with keeping it where it's at to try to limit the use of semis down through there, so, and the use of semis on Gates.
Are they gonna use semis anyway?
Um, no, they will be having, they will, for, for Lock Supply, they will have multiple entrances up here off of East Main. And I think at this time anyways, the turn in for Gates there, you'd have to be a pretty salty truck driver to swing in there anyways, so.
And that property doesn't belong to them, so they can't really widen that approach, right?
Correct.
So.
Same as Luann, like I said, there's residential properties right there that would, would negate them being able to widen that out, cause if you move, if we were to go in and make the easement go wider, the, from my mapping, the residential house there to the south, you're gonna literally go to about the center of their house would be our, our new right of way through there. And it has been Luann for, I know that my GIS tech said it was before he started here, and he's been here about 19 year, 18 years, so.
So the purpose for the planning and zoning making, uh, a request to approve it as a preliminary was along the lines of widening that road-
Correct.
And then have a final once the road is widened?
Correct.
So if there's no need to widen the road, there's not really a need for a preliminary?
Correct.
Okay. Questions or comments of Paul? I don't suppose anyone from Lock is here tonight?
We do have a-
Okay, anything you need to add to this, sir?
Uh, we, we talked with the fire marshal and agreed to give a, uh, the, the right of way along, uh, I think it's a place they were on, uh, the north side of the property.
Okay, on the west boundary? Okay. If a lumber company catches on fire, they better hurry, right? Seriously. Other comments or questions?
Jeff, you good with this? Was you, you were good with that, you were good with that, with that easement?
Yeah, you were.
Make a motion to approve 4J.
In your motion, uh, Humphrey, is to leave the road as is?
Yes.
Okay, just to be clear. I'll second that motion. We have a motion and a second to approve item 4J, and, and, and I'm gonna say, let me add this in, you guys correct me if I'm, we can go ahead and move this to a final plat because we're not gonna require the road to be widened, if that's possible. I think that's our motion.
Do we need to add the, the easement for the fire into that motion?
That's a, that's a good question as well, to make sure that that easement is a part of this.
Would you add a follow on our fire marshal and building inspectors, we can, we can withhold any permits until that is shown on the-
That's done, okay.
I'd like to have it added in there.
Okay.
Make sure the easement is in the, before we go through with any building or anything, make sure that easement is given.
Yeah, and I can guarantee you from Mr. Gordon to fire marshal, that will be reflected before it's-
So approve it as a, as a final road edit, as is, with the easement on the west side for fire, uh, service, and, and then I'll second that motion. Now will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simlescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes, no more planning and zoning tonight, how about that? That was awesome, thank you, Paul. Okay, next is item 4K, uh, consider approval of a resolution establishing fees and costs charged by the City of Durant and the Durant Airport Authority for Durant Services, which is our 2025-14.
And Dennis Godfrey, our, I still call him New Airport Director?
Not new anymore.
Mayor and distinguished council members, pleasure to be before you. And, uh, I beg your pardon, I thought the staff memo given to the Airport Advisory Board would have been attached to this, but apparently not, so I'll just give you a brief, brief rundown. Um, there are existing fees, a schedule of fees for the airport, and this just amends and updates those current fees. And, uh, as part of our grant assurances with the state and the federal governments, we need to show that we're doing everything possible to, uh, to make the airport as self-sufficient as possible, and fees go toward that.
Okay, so, and, and I don't have, I didn't have Cindy to coach me, Pam, so I apologize for that. We may need to do this in the Airport Authority first and then come back to the city-
Yeah.
Uh, and, and approve it-
Yes.
As the city, so-
You got me by surprise.
So don't, so don't, don't move.
That's right.
This is the last item on the city agenda anyway, so we'll pause the city council meeting at this time. And at this time, I will call to order a meeting of the Durant, uh, City Airport Authority. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Shear?
There.
Trustee Simlescu?
Here.
Trustee Tucker?
Here, the first item, bear with me, Paul, consent agenda is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on August the 12th. Do I hear any comments or questions on those meeting minutes from August the 12th? I believe in that time, we approved the meeting minutes from the prior meeting. Hearing none, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda item for the Airport Authority?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item one consent agenda, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Simlescu?
Yes.
Trustee Tucker?
Yes, now, next, the one and only item on the Airport Authority tonight is what we were already talking about, and now that we're in the proper forum, we can have the discussion.
Right, and, and the notable thing here is that this was all brought before the Airport Advisory Board who approved it, and it was discussed at length there, and, uh, they, they found it acceptable, so-
Okay.
It goes on to the Airport Authority at this point.
And primarily, it's the fees for parking and ramp fees for different sized aircrafts, and then there's some hanger changes to the hangar fees?
The fees are in two different sections, distinct sections. One are FBO fees-
Right.
Uh, primarily applying to transient aircraft, visiting aircraft that come to the airport. The second, uh, section of fees is regarding hangars. Uh, so for instance, a, it adds a rent past due fee to a future, uh, hangar lease agreement. So right now, it's not gonna impact the current releases.
The ones that are in place now are grandfathered.
That's correct.
Right, okay. Pretty straightforward, any comments or questions of Dennis on the changes to the fee schedule that he's proposed?
Motion to approve 4A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 4A, which is the fees and costs that Dennis has proposed, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Simlescu?
Yes.
Trustee Tucker?
Yes, motion passes. Being no other items on the agenda for tonight, I move that we adjourn the Airport Authority meeting for tonight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Airport Authority, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Simlescu?
Yes.
Trustee Tucker?
Yes, we stand adjourned. At this time, I would call to order a meeting of the Durant City Utilities Authority. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Shear?
Here.
Trustee Simlescu?
Here.
Trustee Tucker?
Here, uh, first is the consent agenda, item 1A, which is consider approval of regular meeting minutes from August the 12th. That is the only item in the consent agenda. Any comments or questions on those meeting minutes from August?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item one, the consent agenda, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Simlescu?
Yes.
Trustee Tucker?
Yes, item passes. The only other item tonight is item 4A on the Utilities Authority, and that is to consider approval of wall engineering to move forward with plans to relocate a water line and a sewer line on West Arkansas Street for an upcoming ODOT project, Mr. Hightower.
Yes, sir, uh, ODOT will be doing work on the bridge that is over on 6975 that goes over Main Street and Ark, West Arkansas. We have a sewer line and a water line that we need to relocate, uh, because one of their peers will go right down the middle of our sewer line.
Of course.
Every time they show up, they cost us money. Uh, we will, what we will do with the sewer line is encase it, that way by DEQ standards, we can move it within 10 feet of the water line. That keeps it all right down close together, and we don't have to locate it out in the middle of the street. If you go over where that bridge oversects Arkansas, there's no room on the south side of the road to move them over to the south side, so we're gonna have to move to the, to as close to Arkansas as we can. Um, there, this project's supposed to come within, in 2027, but they're, they are wanting plans and everything's submitted now. And this is estimated cost at 306,000, we know how-
Right.
The longer you wait, the more it costs.
Yes.
So, and that'll give time to budget for this.
It doesn't sound big if you say it real fast.
Yeah.
Not compared to last month, right?
No, no, not at all.
Can't do that very often. Comments or questions on this engineering, uh, cost estimate?
Is this cost for the engineering, or is this cost for the-
This is, this cost for moving the water lines and the engineers.
It's the whole project estimate.
It's all the whole project.
Do we have to prove this in the city meeting too?
No.
When we go out to bid, we will, right?
Yeah, for contractors.
This is just to develop it further.
Okay.
Just to show them we got the plans, we're planning it, and we want it, we got it ramrodded for them.
This is planning authorization, not, we're not buying any yet.
Sounds good.
Tell them thanks, Councilmember Miller, cost us money.
Comments or questions on this one? How many more times is ODOT gonna come and do great things in our city?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
All right, motion to approve 4A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 4A, which is the- Yeah, wall engineering, uh, plans, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Simlescu?
Yes.
Trustee Tucker?
Yes.
Thank you.
There are no other items on the Utilities Authority, uh, agenda for tonight, so I'll make a motion that we adjourn. We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Durant Utilities Authority, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Simlescu?
Yes.
Trustee Tucker?
Yes, item passes. Now, we are back in the city council meeting, and now we are down to item 4K, the last item on the city, uh, council agenda, and that is to consider approval of a resolution establishing the fees and costs charged by the City of Durant and the Airport Authority, which we just spoke about a few minutes ago, which is our 2025-14. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve 4K.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 4K, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simlescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes, there are no other items on the agenda for tonight for the Durant City Council, so I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Durant City Council meeting, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simlescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes, we stand adjourned, thank you very much.